Right now, I'm gonna shake my head. How you doing?
You too, Kim.
That is my wife.
Hello again.
Hi, this is your manager. Hi, I'm Jean.
That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
So you guys have moved on that?
Thank you, awesome. Okay.
Yeah.
Major. Most. Play your other kind of. Oh, for the best. Yeah. And and you'll. Yeah. Well, you can see. Hey guys.
Hey. How are you?
Good. Hello.
Hi.
Never call. See. It's not a phone.
Yeah. Depends on.
So for you. Take. Because once. On the side of the email. Any more. So the way it works like a. Uh. And I. Presentation. Then I can do their pitch. Then it was time for. Four against. And then before the side. You can just allow them to sign. Now actually, you know. But they keep it out. Hello. Great. See that? So long. Well, I mean, wait. Yeah. So. Like a kind of. Like where anyone.
See, you said.
We usually don't know where it will be. You have to tell us all the data. And it's. I just couldn't be still. Look at everything.
Well, I wonder why they can have. Why the dinosaur. They can have two skulls with skeletons.
From the. Yeah, that's why there's a.
I'm assuming. I would assume.
No.
Joanne and. So you are.
Then nothing. This can both happen. I was not getting. Right.
That literally.
Yeah. Because yeah, I saw that dinosaur comes up. And they. Because I was like. What would we hear that?
And a whole lot. Were you putting the R back together? It's.
It was. It looked like.
Not at all. Ah. Go off to me. It's. Uh. But no, I have. But you mentioned all the town. And you think. So. I would ask you. You said it was everybody else. Come together.
Yes. Sure. He can always have more excuses. Do the animals. And I want that. I'm fine. So it's not as good. More as computer than in the.
Yes. And it's very long. But unfortunately, I look at the place. Didn't get it right.
Right.
No, it's the other side. Yeah.
No, but it looks so much nicer.
It does. It does. And across one. All like a statue.
The wall did a good job.
Was that?
The walls did a good job. But. These walls can always be videos too.
Yeah.
And then it's really. It's gonna be that mosaic.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Um. Yeah. Cool. Did Ryan?
I think he is.
Okay. I didn't see. I know Terry's not.
Yeah. I think she's the only one who confirmed that she wasn't coming. I don't think I heard back. Already.
Yeah.
Oh, it's always like.
Yeah.
Oh, you know. My loss.
Yeah, I'm going to meet some. My.
Yeah.
It's kind of wrong.
Then it's like.
Okay.
I mean, I need to follow up.
Okay.
Like that. It's just the. Part of. So here. All of them. So. Um. The one. Mm hmm. Uh. First. That was. That means it's been. That. Shaving. Thank you. Thank you. Oh.
It was already.
That's. Hello. So. Being. It's. Going. And that. But then. He's. Yeah.
So.
That's a good. That's a good. Maybe. Yeah. Yeah. I think they're saying. These. So. So.
She was.
Back. Uh. Yeah. Nah.
This is something.
I think it's something. I think. Yeah. Yeah.
Same.
Um. Then just. For those little cars. So we're going on the car. Because if you were happy.
No.
Yes.
I think that's.
And then the other guy.
We do.
You have time. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I did my friend. Friend. We tried to look back. And they get big. Who's digging a big ditch. So. Sounds like did you call? And said he talked to you and you. You helped him out.
Okay. Awesome.
It was probably fine. Yeah.
They're beautiful from time to time.
Yeah.
And then. Sometimes we can do something about it and sometimes we can't.
I was like. He's digging a pretty big hole over there. He's a contractor. He lives in a house. It was like. He needs a permit for that. All to say, apparently someone else had filed a complaint with the city against him.
It's same good.
Yeah. So thanks for helping.
No, plus.
We're playing off.
Yeah. Yeah.
It has.
I have.
See.
Yeah. Like the. Bobby.
Now, I didn't like it. There are two things.
Wow. Yeah, me. I'm like.
What?
Putting. You know, like. And I like. It is. I'll have to. And.
No. Not. Yeah. Yeah. It's like.
Free. Osmosis loops.
No.
No, this is. Those are the. Comment. My part. Comment. So. This is. Well, uh. Yeah.
For many. I think.
See that?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh. In fact. To make sure I can go this. Part.
I was.
Yeah. Yeah. But either. There you're not.
It's. Maybe it's.
This is. Jim. And so. Then. Yeah. Other. This is similar. You have to be. Because. You've been said. And we want to.
It's.
And also. So. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it was about. You. So. That. Standing. You know, it's actually. All. They only present. Yeah. I'll. The.
Good evening. We're calling the meeting to order. The zoning board of appeals for Thursday, October fifth. Two thousand twenty-three. Uh. Roll call. Let it be seen that all but Artie and Tara are present. So we have a. Easy quorum here. Uh. First thing is the minutes of the September seventh meeting. Anyone have a chance to review any edits?
I move to approve the minutes from the September board meeting or ZBA meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from September seventh are approved. Organizational and procedural items. I don't believe there are any. Unfinished business. There isn't any either. So we will proceed with the preamble to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the spirit court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. With that. Staff, let's start with the new business. ZBA case twenty-three dash twelve. Uh. Variance requests from chapter twenty-seven, section two-six-nine. Please walk us through that.
Thank you. So we're gonna wait for just one second because Artie just pulled up. So I'll. Okay. I'll give him a time to sit down before I start my presentation.
No pressure, Artie. We're holding a meeting for you.
You see.
Thanks, Artie. Okay. You missed my preamble. So you missed.
All right. So the first case is ZBA twenty-three dash twelve. As just stated, they're requesting two variances to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the rear setback and to allow retaining wall height of four point two-five feet. So these are the existing conditions. There's an existing one point five foot tall retaining wall in the rear setback that partially encloses a portion of the backyard. Um. Since it's already built, it doesn't require a variance. And this is shown in yellow on the survey to the right. In April, two thousand twenty-three, a permit to build a pool was issued to the property. The pool is shown in the picture to the left. During a May, two thousand twenty-three inspection for the completed pool, one of the city site inspectors noticed a new unpermitted retaining wall on the property located in the rear setback. So parts of the new retaining wall were built up from a portion of the existing one point five foot tall retaining wall. The rest of the new retaining wall uh connects to the existing wall. You can see it better here on this survey. So the portion in red is the new retaining wall that was built up. This increase in height plus slight expansion is the reason for the variance request. The retaining wall encroaches a maximum of thirty-three point two-five feet into the forty-foot rear setback, prompting a variance request. And additionally, it has a maximum height of four point two-five feet, prompting another variance request. Only walls up to four feet in height are allowed. The finished wall is shown in the photo to the left. Both the encroachment and the height could normally be done through a special administrative permit, but as per usual, when these things are already built, reroute them through the variance process. So that's why they're before you tonight. So the subject property drops off approximately ten feet from the northwest property line to the southwest property line, creating a sloped backyard. Removal of the retaining wall at this point would cause significant issues because the retaining wall was installed or the height of it was increased to level out the rear yard to accommodate the swimming pool in its current location. Without accounting for the unique conditions of the site, the strict application of the setbacks could cause a practical difficulty since there may be structural issues associated with removing the retaining wall at this point, since it holds up the swimming pool. Overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Based on these conditions, staff recommends approval of the request subject to the conditions shown on the screen here. We only have one. Um. Since it's already built, there's no need for our typical condition that it needs to be built within a certain amount of time. We're just conditioning it to the site plan shown here. Um. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I had one quick question. Uh. I'm not an engineer, but it occurred to me that when the staff permitted the pool, there was only the one small one and a half foot retaining wall.
Right. And that was existing before the pool was even.
It doesn't seem sufficient to hold the pool. I don't know. Within that next rendering, right? With the four and a half foot. I was just curious, but it was it was there. And apparently I was sufficient at the time to. Permit the pool.
Yeah. Um. I know that a member of the um contracting team is here and could potentially speak more to that process.
Yeah. Any questions for staff, guys? Okay, great. Would the applicant care to address the board? You state your name and. Address.
Um. Hello, I'm Chase Wucheck from Neptune Pools. Um. The company's address is forty-five oh-five Bamford Drive in Sugar Hill. Um. Georgia, three zero five one eight. And I'm here um to request the two variances um on that wall. Um. During the original part of the process, um, the original pool permitted was permitted. And during the construction process, the homeowner requested that permeable turf be installed around the pool. And if you were able to take a look at the pool, it was installed. That's why the wall was built up to four feet high. It doesn't hold up the pool itself, but all the gravel and uh. Um. Infrastructure to make the pool uh the turf area permeable like gravel and um. Um. Drainage areas and all that was um. That's to hold up all that um. I apologize. Not the greatest public speaker, but. I was in engineering school, so.
No, that makes sense. That helps clarify my question. Thank you.
Yeah. But yes, it was a request added after the permitting process and original design that required this wall be built up. Originally, we were just planning to use that area where that one eighteen-inch-high wall currently was and just build up from there. But um. The wall needed to be extended around to keep that level area at four feet. Um. Because the one that one and a half was just holding up that little. Um. Area, so it didn't quite reach around to that height that would level out with the rest of the pool. And. Um. Originally, the wall was supposed to be four feet high, but um after install and putting all the sod down, um, it's the front corner of it was three, three inches too tall. So we're working with Allegra and city engineers um in the future to try to get that um approved on our end by the engineers that we normally work with and send their certification over to the. Um. Channels to get that approved as well.
Okay, great. Thanks. Anyone here uh to speak in favor of the application? Any opposed? With that, I will close it for board comment.
Well, I have a question. Please. So when you added, you knew the turf was coming in. I just want to know from a. From a construction standpoint.
Mm hmm.
Did you? Did you? Because you do pills, pools. Did you know that they to the home? You had suggested to the homeowner to go back to the city? Because you were now building something that wasn't on the original plans? I'm not asking you specifically. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus. I'm trying to understand this whole process. You're not the first one. So tell me, as a pool builder, when things like this come up in other counties, do you? Do you know to go to work, to go get re-permitted? Or is this something that usually is covered?
Um. Well, for this specific case, um, since they extended the wall, um. It would have violated the. The construction of it. Um. For like small changes, we especially um, we know that you have to try to stay within the current um. Uh. Munich codes that people have. Um. Normally, um, we. We stay within those so that whenever the inspectors do come, we're able to talk to the inspectors that because we do a whole bunch of pools in the area, we'll talk to them about what came up. Um. You find bad dirt, you have to build up a wall slightly bit higher. Um. You have to put in extra um infrastructure to try to get it right. And um, yes, on. Because I know working on a few, I do all the uh permitting for City of Atlanta, too. There's, there's a few um changes, like water quality pits that have to be changed, new locations that normally is a. Uh. If that's go through a whole. Re-review process, we try to um get that done, stop work until that's fully approved. Then we come back in later and make our changes.
Because I think I remember in the report, like you worked with the city on the turf. Right? Then they decided turf. I think that was approved. Is that correct? Allegra?
So. Um. My memory is that those things happened at the same time.
Okay.
Um. It's just that the turf got resolved much faster because the variance process is three months and the turf.
Yeah, that's fine. No. So that was good that you went to the city on the turf because it. Okay. That's why I was just trying to understand the thought process.
I think that was around the, I think those came up around the same time. And the turf just got resolved sooner.
Gotcha. Because at some point, you were just gonna build the wall up to four because you knew you could go to four without needing a variance. Is that right?
That's the whole beginning of the process. We try to stay within that, but again, that back left corner, whenever they came in with the sod and more dirt, they didn't actually.
Yeah.
Get it. There was.
And then we added. Then we added a couple of things. Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
No, no. I mean, I had the same question. I was gonna ask actually, at what point did you realize that you needed more than you were given? But.
Yeah.
But. But, um, yeah, that's that. Yeah, I just, I guess with us, it's just. Sometimes I bet you just don't want everybody to go, oh, this is, they're gonna get forgiven anyway, you know?
Right.
But anyway, it is what it is.
And again, it goes back, right? Because the, they could have received the permits, as we all heard, with a special right administrative permit. But since it was, to your point, since they already commenced work, they have to go back through this process. So we see that a lot, right? Yeah. Any thoughts? Questions? Motions?
Um. I move to approve. The request for two variances from chapter twenty-seven, section two-sixty-nine, to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the rear setback and to allow the retaining wall height of four point two-five feet with the following conditions. Uh. Following condition, that construction of the retaining wall must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Alpha Land Services and dated August second, two thousand twenty-three. See appendix A.
Second.
A first and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Yeah. All right. Second case. ZBA twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh. Again, requesting two variances, one variance for chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, to allow a fence to encroach into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer and another from chapter twenty-seven, section two-sixty-seven, to allow a six-foot-tall fence in the streetyard. Staff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the property is a corner lot with frontage on Cambridge Dry and Leeds Way. Um. The seventy-five-foot stream buffer is located in the rear part of the property, and these pictures are of the current backyard. So the applicant proposes to encroach into the seventy-five-foot city stream buffer to[1743.97]
to install a six foot tall shadow box wooden fence to enclose the backyard. This prompts a stream buffer variance. The location of the fence in the street yard facing Leeds Way also prompts a zoning variance as fences and street yards may only be up to four feet tall. The applicant has already installed several fence posts for the proposed fence. When a city code enforcement official noticed the work, um, this was in this photo to the right. Those are the fence posts that had been installed previously. The proposed fence design is shown to the left here and the site plan is shown to the right with the proposed fence in red and the stream buffer in blue. The location of the six foot tall fence in the side yard fronting a street on a corner lot would normally prompt a special administrative permit. Um, however, since they had already technically begun the work and since we were already routing them through the variance process for the stream buffer, we just rolled that into one process. The fence is a minimally intrusive improvement and will not increase the impervious surface within the buffer. Construction of the fence will not cause any significant land disturbance or impact the growth of vegetation. And the design of the fence will not cause trapping of sediment or disrupt the stream bank. Since the stream buffer covers most of the backyard, there is pretty limited space within the rear yard to install a fence without a variance. A backyard fence is a pretty standard improvement for most homeowners and staff finds that this proposal does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief, nor would it be detrimental to public welfare. As a corner lot, the subject property has two street yards, which constrains the amount of land that can be enclosed by a fence without first obtaining relief. As proposed, uh, as a quick note, as proposed, the fence would encroach into existing drainage easements, as you can see in that light green on the site plan. Um, staff very much recommends avoiding that, so we are um including that in our conditions, as you'll see in a second. Um, overall, staff finds that denial of the variance would cause an extreme hardship by preventing the homeowner reasonable use of their property. And the requested variance would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Um, since there are technically two criteria here, I have the stream buffer variance criteria and the zoning criteria, in case we want to break those out. Um, feel free to ask me any questions about those. Um, we've received two letters of opposition and one letter of support. There was one letter of opposition and one letter of support included in the packet. And then there was one letter of opposition forwarded by email last week. Um, additionally, as you've seen, we have a fair amount of public comment for this case. Um, all of those should be with you. So based on these conditions, staff has determined, um, uh, staff is recommending approval of the variance um with three conditions, um, the standard one where the construction needs to begin within two years of the granting of this variance. The fence shall be installed with hand tools only. That's our standard condition for fences within stream buffers. And then the fence will be in substantial compliance with the site plan. The only change here is that the fence shall not encroach into the five foot drainage easement. If this were to be approved, staff would just work with the applicant to receive a modified site plan that would reflect that and then issue the the fence permit um after that. So I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Any immediate questions for staff?
I have two questions for you. Okay, so first of all, uh, this is regarding the fence and the side yard. So you said that any fence over four feet would require a special or could be approved, excuse me. Maybe I better ask this a different way. Could you reiterate what could be addressed through a special administrative permit? And we'll just start with that.
Okay, yeah, so for corner lots, fences that are above six or that are up to, excuse me, six feet in height in a street yard can be approved with a special administrative permit.
Up to six feet.
In height.
In special administrative permit. Okay, and and this obviously is a corner lot, even though the side yard is well, okay, that makes sense. All right, so you could address that up to six feet. This fence is six feet, so they could have gone through the special administrative permit process and it it would have been granted, or were there additional criteria you would have to review?
So we review specific special administrative permit criteria. I can't remember them exactly off the top of my head, but they're really similar to some of the variance criteria. Um, but that's a pretty standard request that we get for special administrative permits. Um, I would say potentially over half of them are for fences in in side yards that are technically street yards on corner lots. Um, and we tend to approve those, although I never want to say for sure what would happen.
Okay, so here's what I, the other part that I was trying to ask. Do they have to seek approval because it's in the side yard regardless of the height, or only if the side yard fence is above four feet or above six feet?
Okay, great questions. Our fence code is very confusing. So the, so with corner lots, what happens is they have two street yards and so generally speaking, fences in street yards can be up to four feet and require a permit. Fences in backyards typically do not require a permit of any kind, but fences in street yards, which for most people is their front yards, can be up to four feet and just require a permit. For corner lots, street yard fences can be up to six feet with a special administrative permit. If that clarifies that.
Yes, thank you.
And the thought behind that is because that's what, if you're not a, if you don't have a corner lot, that's typically your your side yard, and so you typically don't need um, you you can typically just do those six feet sort of by right, but.
Okay. So if if a resident wanted to put up, let's say, a four foot fence in a side yard, they would just require a regular permit.
On a corner lot?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and if they wanted to do it on a, as a six foot, they would go through the special administrative permit process. And if they don't do that in advance of installing fence posts and they're also building a fence in the backyard in the stream buffer, then they need to go through the spec- the variance process.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's it. Yes.
Yes.
But they need a permit for it, but not a special administrative permit, just our fence permit that we issue within a few business days.
Is six foot the max or eight?
That's the max for
Yeah.
street yards on corner lots.
Yep. Two questions, okay. Anything else yet? Okay, would the applicant care to address the board? State your name and address and reason for variance application?
Hello, my name is Patrick Culver. My wife and I live at forty eight fifty seven Cambridge Drive. And I'm just requesting the fence for the safety and privacy of our family. We do have, I don't know if you noticed on the the survey, the entire U shape on the backyard facing the street is a glass wall with a glass door all the way out to the street and just for privacy and safety of our family and our young little kiddo on the way in about a month, we just would love to have that's peace of mind for us. And I apologize as well for starting on the fence. We just moved from Lawrenceville. I had no idea we needed permits and I kicked into that mode about two months ago, so I apologize for that, starting early on that, without permission.
Okay. No questions at this point? Great, we have some um folks here that want to speak in favor. We have ten minutes total, you know, just to set expectations and Paul's keeping the clock. So uh yeah, the, yeah, the, yeah, quick ones, I think, is uh Daniel and Wendy. You want to uh address the uh, address the board? Oh, okay. Yes, this is uh four with modification.
It's not. Mine's, yeah, it's four with, yeah, that's a good one, four with modification.
Okay.
Um, I'm Wendy Gibbons. I live um, my, the front of my house faces the side yard. I'm on Leeds Way. There's only two houses that actually have a Leeds Way address. Um, I've lived there for thirty four years. And it's sort of more the character of the neighborhood, I think, is what we are considering, and I'm speaking for my um neighbor also, I think, sent in a um a letter, Jason Bellnap or the Bellnap family. And I think for us is that when we look out of the front of our house, we don't want to look at a long fence line. Um, I'm not opposed to it. I think just if it didn't come out quite as far from the house. If you look at the pictures where the posts are, I mean, it's out, if you think about it as six foot segments, it's out five or six six foot segments. So I think if they cut it down where it didn't come out as far, um, it would run a little bit more congruent or um with the fence, with the tree line. But this is sort of what we've been looking at. This is the character of the neighborhood. There is nobody else. There's another house that's kind of directly across the stream. They don't have that long wooden fence line. It's just never been there. I'm not saying change is bad, not at all, but I think that sort of for everybody to get what they want, we just maybe need to make a little bit of a modification and change.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm with her.
Okay. I think we have Jeannie Culver next.
I'm Jeannie Culver. I live at five four four eight Mount Vernon Way. Used to live on Cambridge Drive, been a Dunwoody homeowner for twenty seven years. Raised my family here and that is my son, and I would like him to have a backyard that's safe for our grandchildren. You can see four of them that also are Dunwoody homeowners, then we just want to enjoy the yard and every other house around there has fences that go to the backs and things. I guess the side is an issue, but so we just really want them to be able to fence their yard and they have dogs that can jump and, you know, kids and things, so that's why they want it to be a safe, a safe height. So I just hope that you can support them and um we're just thrilled that they chose to come back to Dunwoody.
Thank you. Uh, and I think it looks like we have uh Michael Culver potentially, yeah.
Uh, thank you all. Yes, Michael Culver also resides at five four four eight Mount Vernon Way. Uh, been in, you know, Dunwoody uh twenty plus years. Uh, we're delighted. Three of our four kids live here. Uh, and the things I just want to comment on, and I understand too, I'm in residential real estate, uh, understand, you know, the character of keeping Dunwoody, you know, as attractive as it is. Um, the photos show some that there's actually some brush to the front there where the fence posts are and actually towards the front of the house, it's not as clear cut. I don't believe there is be as much fence visible. It'd actually be, you know, rather subtle and attractive. Um, just to mention, I know not too long ago, there was a fence approved for the new construction on the corner of Vernon Ridge and Thornhill that is an eight foot high flat wood privacy fence with multiple homes on Vernon Ridge facing that. And I don't know what the opposition or process was, but, you know, things could look a lot worse. I think this is actually pretty attractive. Um, there are, one of the neighbors does have a fence as far as the stream buffer goes that does appear to encroach in it. Um, there's a house over on Courtly that a fence, you know, in the last year or two is approved that encroaches that. As far as the side yard, um, I think that very little, um, we love the Gibbons, we know her husband from teaching at Dunwoody. Their view, for the most part, is probably two thirds from the fence forward, a very attractive view. Um, the other neighbors, uh, basically from their driveway would be looking, but from their side of their driveway across the rest of their front yard, they're still looking at woods and the remaining stream buffer. Uh, I also want to point out, you know, I think it's a pretty attractive solution. Patrick went to them, proposed, asked their input on styles of fencing. Um, there was an old shed back there, just off the back of Patrick's property, visible from straight across from the house on Leeds Court's uh property for years that nothing was said about. And that was far more unsightly. It had the large full side orange um highway safety cones out there and until the fence discussion came up and the city then said that needed to go, that view was never an issue. I think this is pretty attractive. I do think maybe a few foot compromise, as Ms. Gibbons mentioned, would be a solution. We would love our son to be able to fence in the whole backyard, but there's a little falloff of the property at that point, and they would probably not see half the fence removed, maybe five to six feet back as a solution. I'd love to see him get full approval, but if if moving it back a little bit uh gets the satisfaction of the board, um, that actually would give some ground cover. It's wooded back there. Uh, there'd be no view issues. I do not think it would be unsightly at all.
Thank you. Uh, Christine McDonald?
Good evening. My name's Christine McDonald. I live at fifty five thirty two Mount Vernon Way um and have been in Dunwoody since second grade, but then returned after I graduated from university uh ten years ago uh to raise my family. And so I, for me, the fence is important because it provides safety uh to my nephews uh as he grows up and any future kids that they may have. Um, just, you know, being a mom of four, I know how it can be with kids and to have that safe space to let them go and be outside and enjoy the outdoors without having to worry about them falling into a stream or running into the street. Um, I myself live on a corner lot, and so that's always a big concern um when I'm in mom mode, so thank you.
Thank you. Austin McDonald?
Uh, my name is Austin McDonald. I live at um fifty five thirty two Mount Vernon Way. Um, we, I've been in Dunwoody ten years, um, raising my family with Christine here. Um, Patrick's my brother-in-law. Um, and um, I'm, I'm here to talk in support of the fence. Um, it's, it's obviously something that would be safe for my kids to play in the backyard, along the street, along the creek. Um, and and obviously his his furry, furry family as well, so um, I'm, I'm in support of the fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we adhered pretty closely to that ten minutes. We had, we all lost the same amount of time for um those who are opposing. So uh Jerry James, would you care to address the board? Okay. Uh, John Shine? Joanne, I'm sorry, that's an, that's a, that's an A, not an H.
I, I think I'm actually four with conditions. I didn't realize that was an option and apologies, I'm nervous and cold. Um, I raised my kids. I I'm right next door to the Culvers, forty eight forty seven Cambridge Drive, and I have a nineteen year old and a seventeen year old. And we've lived um at that address since my son was one. And so we raised our kids very safely um on in the neighborhood. We have a chain link fence around our yard that was existed when we bought the house. Um, I don't oppose them, their desire for safety. They do have a glass enclosure on the side, but I didn't like the idea of a six foot privacy fence jutting out so far into the side street. I just feel like it takes away from the visual appeal of the neighborhood. We're very woodsy, so I would speak in favor if it were the structure, if the fence were closer to the rear of the home, maybe enclosing the door of their back lot or their back structure. Um, you can also keep your kids safety with, safe with a four foot fence. You don't need a six foot high fence, privacy fence, if it's a safety issue. Um, but that was my opinion about that. And I'm also happy to hear about the um buffer. Because our, um, when they cleared the Ivy, when they uh started looking into putting up the fence, we realized that the Ivy that they cleared this by our chain link, there's in some areas, there's almost a whole foot of dirt that's higher in their yard than our yard, almost like our posts are being buried a little bit. So I'm happy to hear that they'll be um creating a little bit of a space so that we can sort of maintain that and prevent erosion um between the two fences. So I think that just about covers it. Oh, and the Belt Naps are good friends of ours and they're on vacation, so that's why Jason sent an email. And I think he's in agreement. I shared my letter with him. Um, as you can see, I copied all my neighbors on the bottom. Um, he's in an agreement that if it's closer to the rear of the home, we feel like it would be a little bit less um to to take away from the aesthetics of the street. It's a very short little street. It's really super cute. And I just think that the six foot high privacy fence jutting really far out into the side yard would take away from the appeal. Thank you.
Also, could you please say your name and address?
I'm sorry, Joanne Shine, forty eight forty seven Cambridge Drive.
Thank you.
Michael Shine at forty eight forty seven Cambridge Drive. Like Joanne, I'm opposed to the fence being so close to the street. This street is very short. There's no sidewalk on the street. I would prefer the fence to be closer to the structure of the home.
Okay, thank you for comments. There's no other uh cards, so uh we're done with the public comment, and I'll close it for board comment and questions.
I have a question for the applicant. So the fence company, uh, well, I should ask, are you installing the fence yourself, or do you have a a company or a contractor doing this?
So it's myself and I usually hire some guys. My dad's been real estate and we're engineers, so just kind of plan ourselves by hiring work to help me physically put it in.
Okay, so there wasn't a a company doing this, who should have known?
Contractors that I hired, yeah, and I guided them.
Okay, um, then my other, I have another question. So um, the city is recommending or is requesting that you pull the fence in to avoid the five foot drainage easement. Um, and so I believe that that means you have to draw the fence line five feet closer or five feet away from where the drainage easement is, right?
Correct, and that's in between our house and our neighbor's house, right?
Okay, so
Perfectly fine.
So, so that's moving the fence in five feet on that side, and my question is, on the side yard facing Leeds Way, do you know offhand how much? Do you know offhand how much? I'm trying to identify this. So the, the fence that comes from the house to the, where the fence perimeter will go.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what that length is?
I know the opposite at the moment. It's fourteen feet to the black line from the street, plus two for the current red line. So sixteen feet away from the street is the current setback.
Okay, so, so wait, so yeah, this is thirty-six. Okay, okay, so there is space if, if that's one of the conditions to move it a little closer to the house, there is space to do that.
Absolutely, yeah. Our, our biggest thing is just as far as moving the physical fence line towards the back of the house. It's tricky with us just trying to cover that glass wall, but more than happy to walk it in away from the curb, if that makes sense.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So how, 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 how far back is that glass?
Um, the glass is actually, the first post in the picture that we're showing right now starts just two feet into the brick wall from where the glass is. You can actually see the corner of the brick and the glass wall with the glass door there.
Yeah, but do you know how much it is? Do you know what the?
The dimensions of the glass wall?
No, no, uh, we, we, we're trying to think ahead to try to see if we have to move it back and we don't want to get into your glass. So I wanna, I'm trying to see if you know, since you're building it.
Yeah, support wise with the two-foot kind of buffer to be able to lean up against the brick wall, that's kind of at the maximum as far as shifting back towards the stream.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's definitely room coming in from the street to still be able to have that door open and close.
Got you, um.
And then this is, we pulled up the, the side plan here, which is helpful. Cause it shows, let me see if I can move that mouse. It shows over here, this is the thirty-five foot setback line. So this striped line here is exactly thirty-five feet from the property line. And then the curb is another, what'd you say, fourteen feet? So like this, the curb is out here. We have fourteen feet to the property line, then thirty-five feet to the setback line. And then we have another approximately five feet to, to the house so far to help us.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was very good. That's very, very good. Um. So it seems as if the I mean, the whole thing is for the neighbors, I might be wrong, but it's, it's the character. How do I, how do I, how does it look? Um, it's not anything to safety, it's um, a spare. I mean, did you think about maybe putting, that's more money, but putting some bushes or something that makes it look?
We are more than happy to, yeah. We actually already adjusted the look of the fence too for the neighbors, so happy to do shrubs, any kind of bushes that are requested.
You mean in front of the fence?
Yeah, on the outside towards the street, yes, sir.
Yeah, I think from, from my standpoint, I mean, I have a fence, you know, it's, I have kids, I have a dog. Uh, there were some good arguments made and I'm glad there's communication between the neighbors and stuff, but the four-foot or a six-foot fence is not gonna, or I'm sorry, a four-foot fence is not gonna protect your dog. Arguably your kids, dogs, dogs can easily hop a four-foot fence, even a medium to small size out. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm of the opinion that six-foot is more than fine. Um, I personally don't want to get into the semantics of hey, they should take it back two feet here and do, you know, unless it's, they're, they're following code. The only thing the, the homeowner has really not followed at this point is the fact that they started building without knowing, which happens. Uh, yeah, it would have been permitted and, and then we wouldn't even be sitting here, right? So that happens a lot. Um, I, I just personally, I mean, they're within their right to do so. I understand the aesthetic argument, especially for those folks that have lived here um, a long time, um, but change is inevitable. I know this, I know this route very well, my dog walking route. Uh, there's a huge house there that's probably got an eight-foot fence, I think. There's a couple teardowns in the neighborhood, so it's only gonna continue to happen. I'm not saying we turn into a shambly or brook haven and build on top of each other, but this is a very basic thing in my opinion, and just throwing that out there for the board.
Yeah, I mean, um, it's, it's interesting. So for me, I'm trying to, I think I know the neighborhood, um, I think I cut through that neighborhood. And, 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 and I see it. I think, I think now that you mentioned it, I think I'm gonna look at it a little bit more, but I'm thinking that if um, if you do agree to maybe, it's not a problem to put some bushes or some other thing there.
Yeah.
It might be a good alternative because they're trying to, and correct me if I'm wrong, neighbors, you're trying to keep that woodsy type of not outside type of feel, like I'm walking through a park really and um, and it's kind of homey. Um, so I think that would do the trick, but you know, Ryan has a oh, I, um, you know, we, definitely put it this way, for my dog, four feet, forget it. They'll be over and, and sometimes for kids, you have to let them, it's just the four feet is just not gonna do it. Um, and um, is the two feet gonna make a big difference? I, I don't know. The post's already in, right?
Just the side posts going to the street, yeah, a couple of those. I think a four or five total.
And you have some in the buffer, right? And your pictures in your packet, don't you have some in your buffer in your backyard?
Um, no, this is just on the, on the yard towards the street. There's none currently on the other side yet.
So there's a lot of pictures in your packet. There's like your neighbor's gotta lean to or something.
Oh, no, we had dug holes and just set the post without concrete, so.
Oh, those are just, okay, that was just, you're showing us the future.
Exactly.
Thank you. Up the windows, okay. Sure, I was like, there's so many posts already in there.
Yeah.
I know, I feel much better.
Yeah.
All right, um, cause what's interesting y'all is, you know, we talk about the, the neighbors, you know, you're gonna look at fence. But Dunwoody no longer allows you to put a chain link up. So in the past, when we all moved into our houses in the dark ages, because we all raised our kids together.
Yeah.
Um, the neighbor might have put up a chain link and then your, then your vista doesn't change as much.
Right.
But they're no longer allowed in the city of Dunwoody. Only if you have a chain link can you keep it up. So it does re, you know, you're, so we're telling homeowners, there are some constrictions. And we're telling people that have lived in the neighborhood, we're gonna have to get used to a new, some, some nuances to what we've kind of gotten used to, so. I mean, I appreciate this talk, but I also think it's something that maybe as neighbors, y'all talk it through. And if you're willing and, but that's, I'm not sure that the zoning board can, needs to tell you how to landscape your yard. And that's where I'm gonna leave it at.
No, I did.
If you're in code, I'm not gonna tell you how to landscape.
I would agree with that and both of these variances would be uh, permitted under special use.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and, and not only that, but I would never expect the board to put landscaping.
No, we're not gonna.
If the city didn't recommend it or something as part of it.
So the city's position is to recommend, is to approve it as as here.
With the exception of the, of the, the drainage, the drainage area, avoid that.
Okay.
And I might add, in, in September, right, the uh, city commission was gonna, city council was gonna look at the, then they did, right? So then, so.
Yeah, so the second read is Monday, the sixteenth, so hopefully we'll have an answer.
So they would have made the, the uh, the fence and the stream buffer move as well.
In other words, in a couple. Hypothetically, if this was a couple of months out, the applicant applied. It could have been done all administratively and this may not have even made it to the board.
That was my point.
Correct, if that, yeah, if that text amendment.
That's why we're not focusing so much on the stream buffer, because it's, I have a foregone conclusion that that's not gonna be an issue moving forward. Um, cause it's permeable, right? It's fenced and then water can flow under it and.
So technically he could withdraw his factation and just have it later without us being involved. Forget me.
Already here.
I didn't say that.
Hey, listen, I'm talking and proposing, you take it. Um, yeah, so, I mean, one of is the two feet gonna make a big difference or not?
My, my personal opinion is yes, that's heavily trafficked. The high schoolers on the way home in four feet is pretty easy to look over. And with dogs, we have Australian shepherds, that's a joke to them to jump over. So it definitely would make a difference, honestly.
Okay, so how about moving backward two feet? Is that the big difference or not?
Backwards as far as towards the glass door?
Yeah.
We could do that if you'd like, just go straight up to the corner of the concrete wall.
A-again, I don't think we should mitigate. I thi- I think, I like the dialogue that's been going on here tonight and the, and the comment cards. I think that the applicants and the neighbors can probably work on some mitigation strategies. Uh, I think the father-in-law or whatever, I talked about potentially moving in and so, I mean.
No, no, here's what I'm thinking. I mean, I think people see what go, but if they agreed in the case, I don't want to bring it back only for me to have decided again on it. But if, 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 if the advocate is saying, you know what, hey, guys, I'll compromise, I'll give you two feet, you're gonna sell and that's it. You know, it's the, cause that's the only issue.
That's true.
There's nothing else.
But again, it's, it's arbitrary and on, it's, it's an enforcement of code as written versus an arbitrary opinion on aesthetic. Cause it's a functional purpose, right? The, the applicant is claiming that the six feet versus the four is more conducive to the purpose and spirit of what they're trying to do. So for us to meddle in the opinions of for or against, I mean, it's important to hear them, but.
Yeah, but I, the, the, the height for me, it's a no brainer. I don't think four feet is.
So what's the two feet you're referring to?
But I'm saying moving back.
Oh, again arbitrary though, I mean, like, is it two feet, is it three, is it one and a half, is it one point seven five?
But if he's willing to do it, then, and that makes the neighbor happier. Hey, you know, it's fine. If they're not, then we'll roll it. Yeah.
Yeah.
But since nobody's moving together to, to say, yeah, 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 we'll roll on it.
Dialogue between the neighbors and they all wanna do the right thing that there's that they'll, they'll be able to work this out. I don't know that we need to.
Yeah, but, but that means that it's either adjourned another date for them to be the dialogue or not. You know, it's not, we can't, we can't do it.
Right, convert, yeah, conversely you prove it and just go, let him go by his word to say he'll do right by his, you know. In other words, I don't think that we should delay or, you know.
Well, well, if, if, if they had go, okay, no problem, would have been like, see, but nobody's doing that, so we'll move on.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Uh, I don't know if there's any time left. I don't, I think it's too. Yes, it was closed, so yeah.
Since he deferred the comment, right?
Yeah, at the end, it's board comment at the end, there is, after, after it's rendered.
Alright, I'm making, making a motion to approve, um, move to approve the request for two variances from chapter sixteen. Section seventy-eight and chapter twenty-seven, section two sixty-seven. To allow a fence to encroach in the seventy-five foot stream buffer and allow a six-foot tall fence in the street yard with the following conditions. Number one, the fence must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Georgia Land Surveying and dated five to twenty-twenty-two and subsequently hand-edited with a proposed fence line. See appendix A, with the exception that the fence shall not encroach into the five-foot drainage easement. Two, the fence shall be installed with hand tools only. And three, if construction is not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Grab a second.
Second.
We have a first and a second motion to approve variance. All those in favor?
Fine.
Unanimous, none opposed. Okay, congratulations. Alright, any other business? Um, no other business?
Uh, just, you mentioned second read on the seventy-foot five, seventy-foot buffer variance.
Yes.
Going through whatever that process is administratively versus variance, that second read is on the next council meeting or this month or next?
Yes, it is coming back on October sixteenth.
Okay, and so were they just having, forgive me, but what does second read mean? Just they're looking it over again? Can they vote on it at that point or?
They can, okay, yes.
Then it'll be effective, I guess, immediately, right?
Correct, so we are, we are currently sort of like people who are coming forward with potential variances, we're currently holding them to see, to see how that would land. So we have no more in the pipeline at this, at this time.
Thank you.
We're waiting to see how that shapes up with city council.
Uh, public comment. No public comment? You can speak if you'd like. It won't hurt you.
I have lived in the neighborhood. I'm two houses down from the applicant and I've been there since nineteen sixty-seven. So you talk about knowing what the area looked like back then and what it looks like now. I would appreciate a compromise from the applicant to pull the side of that fence that is on Leeds Way back several feet. This does encroach on how much play area and dog area there would be, but not that much. And if the six, if the six-foot fence is what they want, I would approve that. I would like them to put some shrubbery or greenery around this to soften the look, because we're kind of used to all our greenery in this area. So if they could move it closer to their house on that side, I would be much happier. But I've been there a long time and so I don't know if my opinion will have any sway with them. And I welcome them to the neighborhood and their children and their dog, dogs, plural. I raised four children there. The oldest one is now sixty-two, good God. So anyway, I'm very fond of my neighborhood, so compromise can be reached. That would make me very happy. Thank you very much for your time listening to me.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for coming.
My name and address, Geraldine James.
Yes.
Forty-eight, thirty-nine Cambridge Drive, Dunwoody.
Georgia.
And we have your, and we have your card, so you're good.
Uh, forty-eight, forty-seven Cambridge Drive. The um, shed shack that they were talking about, that was a Halloween thing. It was not a permanent thing. It was a temporary thing. Had a witch and, and some cobwebs and we were just lazy, right? We didn't take it down for a while. We were wanting to let the little kids celebrate another Halloween before they're all tweens. So I just wanted to add that, that that it was not something that was permanently there.
Well, thank you. Sounds like a great neighborhood. I'm sure you all will uh, do what you need to do to continue to have such a great neighborhood. So thank you all for your comments this evening. We really appreciate the input and uh, cooperation between all the, all the residents there in that area. And with that, we are adjourned.
Sounds good.